No, we don't want to get into that.
We won't do that, real quick.
Well, and then along those lines, if we're hiring that sanitary log of these other positions, you know, we could, if we did the interviews, then we could send it as a recommendation to the Board of Health. I am on the Board of Health, so I would have direct, you know, what's going on and what the process with, is the interview. And we do have a board meeting Thursday, this Thursday, so I'll let them know about that and see if they have any questions. But I'll also check with John, make sure you get back to me. What about before Thursday, okay, John?
Okay, sure.
Maybe I'll invite the Board of Health to send in if that's a...
Well, if that's what we decide, I'll ask the Board of Health what their feelings are. If they want me, you know, I'll just ask them. Because this would be a concern of theirs, because we do have a sanitary right now, so it's kind of, it needs to be, it needs to be made sure we do it the right way.
But the contract says you can...
Right.
You do have a clause.
But I guess my concern would be if the Board of Health is supposed to pick it, and they say they, they don't want to make a change, well, then we need to discuss why, or maybe have them be part of the interview.
Yeah.
So we'll stay on that. Guess that'll be something for me to work on this week. All right, thanks Peggy. We need a motion to go into drainer, please. Your second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Paul, did you have something?
Yes. I, I forgot, and I was standing there blank looking at you this morning. We did a bid letting last Tuesday that we talked about in a little section. Bid letting for a paving, the parallel bidders of Manatsy, two point two eight million, two million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. We talked about the engineers' guesses getting close to the, to the, uh, the estimates close to the contracts. Dave Powell was within three thousand on the estimate that we submitted before Christmas on this project, so he's extremely lucky, and it's too bad he's a U N I fan. But we had four bidders, Manatsy, Coles, Flynn, and Cedar Valley. The intent from Manatsy along, clear back, long before this project was out, if they were interested in our project, they wanted to hit it right off the bat, and off the bat would be the first part of April. With that in mind, we sent letters to all property owners on this entire segment, and they went out last week. I don't know if anybody got any feedback.
Property owners, not residents.
Property owners.
That's the problem. I think we gotta get out and talk to the residents, because all of a sudden you find out you can't leave your yard with your car for three days.
If they don't, if they're renting it, they won't know it. If they're...
That's what I mean.
Yeah, if they're renters, then we're hopeful that property owners, and, I mean, we have no idea knowing.
Yeah.
So we sent the first low fruit, we, we got a list from the assessor's office and sent to wherever...
We can put something in the paper probably, too.
I think we need to get...
And I will, once we have a scale...
...two bus routes.
Until April, farmers gotta be notified, you know, they gotta be paying attention, because all of a sudden you can't drive across that road for three days.
Well, and again, you can't pay till the fifteenth of April. I mean, but they mailed, last time they had the project, they were in here with the milling machine when we had the pre-con, and we couldn't have the pre-con until they faxed us the contract, which we don't have anything new than what came offline right at this point, so...
Okay, we better get started. Are you gonna back later, or not?
Yeah, I'm back, I'm here.
All right. All right, we're in drainage, and the first item is to get, take care of a pay estimate for number eight, Kretex. Rick, you wanna go on?
Yes, this is just to get us real close on the quantities. I hope to have that, um, negotiated yet this week. We're so close, um, but this is to get them up to, to date on what's been delivered and used. So, the total's thirty-four thousand, five seventy point one five, thirty-four, five seventy point one five, and, yeah, just a, your typical procedure for approving pay estimates.
Does, uh, the excess, uh, been taken off, I guess?
I haven't, Denver by there today. I don't know if conditions were good enough for them to do that or not, I, but I couldn't tell you. I'll try and go that way when I go home.
But otherwise, it's been taken off.
Yes, yes, yeah, 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 that is it. I don't believe it's been physically picked up, but yeah, we've allowed for that, so...
So, is that putting us in the ballpark for...
Yeah, we're very close to agreeing with Denver on, uh, this and the material, so, yeah. We'll, we'll basically have you the, the final, final with everything worked out, um, next meeting or the run after, probably. You don't have to be in a hurry to pay up, um, you pay once a month is what the specs say, so, I'm speculating that, um, we won't finalize it until maybe a month from now, but whether to make them additional payment, we may wait that month, but otherwise, yeah, we're very close.
All right. Rick?
Yeah.
When you guys put that intake back in the ditch that you took out on my, right where you crossed the road, there was an intake there. There is not one now. There needs to be one.
I need to talk to you about that, because we're, we need to run a line to something to get it into the system. They don't really want to dig twenty-eight feet deep to, to make the connection, if we can figure out a way to make it work, I guess.
I mean, that also, that bunch of tile lines up in the field there, that blind that didn't get hooked back up.
Well, we've got several connections made through the property, well, and that's where they spent that extra money to run parallel tile.
Different, look, this is clear, right, clear by the road, there was an intake in that ditch.
Are you talking the north, the north end, or your south end of your property?
South end.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Everyone across the road.
Yeah.
There was an intake in that ditch on both sides, parts of the side doesn't really matter, the mine does, water all comes down there, and if you don't pull an intake, then it's gonna go across my field now.
Pre-take.
Field, so it would flow what direction, or stop into the ditch?
It'd get it all...
Mark?
It's a total curve.
I guess, um, I should probably talk to Paul on that, just to verify how to handle that.
Just pass that around a little bit.
Like I say, I need to dig another hole, twenty-five feet deep or whatever, to get the intake in.
I don't know, but it's not right, and then that D D two, where the little washouts are, I see I got a tile that never got hooked up there, and I know they never put tile back in there, I'm gonna have to go back in there and re-tile that corner if we didn't hook any of that stuff up.
And I didn't, haven't been in the office to look at the has-beens on that.
Have you seen pictures of them two off?
Yep, yep, I've been by it, too.
Well, that one right in the ditch, that tile, five inch tile, didn't get hooked up. Right there, Gary?
Right at the intake.
Well, make some notes on that.
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep.
But I want to be notified when I go down there to work on that, whoever's gonna work with me. Have you gotten anybody lined up yet? Um, we're gonna talk about that in a closed session. Rick, I've got it lined up, and somebody's gonna be there, there's gonna be an engineer there, and you're gonna be there.
Yeah.
We'll go through that, yeah.
Yep.
We made that clear the other day, so...
Yep, absolutely.
But we, yeah, we, we're close on that, let's put it that way, we're gonna try and get it done here, as quick as we can.
We're gonna move on now.
And then you make sure that, you make sure it's not to know about that, so that's why we want to make sure with that part.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. I need, I need a motion, right?
I'll make a motion for a blue pay estimate, number eight, to Kretex, for thirty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars, fifteen cents.
Your second?
I would second it, but I'd like to put on there that you're also gonna give us the number of the ones that are rejected or broken, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I, I got to have got out and got a count.
So that isn't the final, final?
No, 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 it's, we're really, really close, but I, yeah, I wanna go through it once more.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion, and second to that motion. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, all right, very good. All right, it's past nine thirty-five, this is the part for D D eighty-four. And Rick, you probably have a commission out there?
Yes, well, I, um, there's a, there was a petition submitted for, to look at, I don't know if it stated repairs or improvements, or how it was worded exactly, um, okay, and that's what, how we're trying to look at this right now, they just simplify permits and, and everything a lot, and we believe there's enough problems with the existing tile that replacing it with like-size is gonna do wonders for the drainage. There's a location they were pumping from in town, where if they pumped south across the field, the water would keep coming and it started drying up north of that intake, so we believe the tile in town, north of that location, are working adequately. There's like a seven to nine hundred foot stretch that we believe we're gonna have to relay as a minimum to make it work properly. The good news is they extended the two inch pipe south, got it to an intake that's taking water, so that's why we were hoping that we can just replace that seven to nine hundred feet with like-size, which I believe is twenty-four inch, um, and, and basically solve the problem. But we're gonna put something together formally with some options for cleaning and televising, upgrading to a larger size, um, we'll, we'll do some quick estimates on stuff like that, but it appears that a repair by relaying a portion of it will probably take care of it, so. I guess accept the petition and officially hire us to finish up that report.
This would be above the repair amount, probably, so we will don't take bids on this crap.
Probably.
I think it'd be over fifty thousand.
Yeah, so we have to get competitive quotes at least, I think, but there's, there's a, I don't know if I put that in the file enough, that was increased...
Maybe it's more than that.
I think it's a hundred and...
I think it is more, but then that's gonna be...
What's that, Rick?
That's what's all the hearing data.
Yeah, and that's, I told Trish this morning, I would check on this, if there's a way to, um, speed this up, since it's gonna, almost certain it's gonna be considered a repair. We'll get, we'll get an estimate put together...
Yeah, but we're not replacing a higher size.
Right, that's right.
We're not making, adding any additional...
That's right, no wetland issues, or when you do a repair...
You're gonna check on all that, but we'll still go ahead and set this date.
Well, what you'll do, you'll end up basically authorizing us to put this information together, and then we'll let you know if you need the forty days, or if you can do it shorter basis, based, because we almost need a cost estimate to see where we're at, um, before we know, yeah.
Where we're gonna go.
If you can just...
Rick, did they say when they're gonna put the juice down there, so that we don't have to worry about something that might be heated?
I was there on Wednesday, I would, I, it'd probably up in Monday now, because they probably put it in two days, you'd have a...
I already had a picture of the, of the unit on...
Not running drop, but...
Right. Paul, she took pictures of some of those.
Well, they had, they had a hundred and some foot drop with a metal box on it, laying in damn water.
I said that as part of this expense, I mean, it's a...
Yeah, we can't have that.
You can't have that either.
No, no, they did get it wrong.
All right.
Yeah, good question.
Covered we are.
And why, for people to go like that, I was out there, and we helped get things moving, and then everybody showed up like they said they were, and we got it done. We couldn't just keep waiting, say if somebody's gonna do it down the road, it never gets done, you know? We get rain now, I'm talking to you.
That's what I concerned, we get a lot of rain, that little pump ain't gonna help, it's gonna...
So we need to, um, accept the petition for repair and reclass?
Yes.
That's what we need to do.
Yep.
And hire an engineer, so, maybe we'll get a motion to end that.
I'll make the motion to accept petition for repair and reclassification.
And hire...
Hire Westergaard.
And Jay's been working on that part of that, and he's done a lot of good work for us, keep us in communication what's going on, so I do appreciate that.
And we've got it, we've, truthfully, I took a chance on this happening, and we, we're very close on the reclassification, so...
So we have a motion, your second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? See, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Can you say it here? Actually, that's, yeah...
See on the cost.
There you go.
See what the down is, so this'll get us moving quicker, and maybe we won't have to, you'll know more on the fee, the actual fee and everything.
Yes, yep, that's right. No better idea on the footage and cost.
Is there any way of dropping some dye in that intake, and then timing it to see how fast it gets out to the river, to see how fast it is?
Yeah.
I mean, is there any...
Yeah, we, we try and keep eye on hand all the time, I have to see what our supply is right now.
That was just a thought, because, you know, you go out to the river and you can't tell them, because of the outlet, it's three feet underwater.
Mm-hmm.
You don't know how fast it is taking the water.
The only thing would be is if we can put enough in it that it isn't so diluted you can't see it, yeah, yeah, but would we, I'll see what we have.
That was just a thought I had, I, I didn't know, because when down there and looked at the outlet, and like I say, it was four feet underwater.
Yeah, and probably will stay that way for a while.
Yeah, and that's another thing that's slow.
Okay, we'll be back with Rick and Trish here in a little bit later, we need a couple items, especially in regular session, and then we can get into closed session, so at that time, have a motion to go out of duty, so...
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll talk to you in a little bit.
Perfect.
Bring Jamie back, and then we'll let Dean come in, and we'll get everything else done.
He's totally fine. I had it personally.
Right, you know?
I think that's just one opinion.
Wow. Oh, and here's that, just people, you know, that insurance, you, or else insurance gives out just information that goes...
What opinion?
Yeah, this, this is from different areas.
Yeah, we...
Yeah.
She's gonna have to come up to him. Yeah. That's what that...
Lincoln High, or what's it called?
Oh, yeah, Lincoln National, you're right.
Lincoln National, that's what it was.
Well, whatever, I'll talk to Peggy about that more, she thinks of anything that's, you know, we have a standard. Not much, and I don't know if this is... Yeah, I don't know if this is in our area, I'll say this, but she thinks of affairs on that part of it.
Well, nobody needed to play, I think there was a bad in the office.
Sure.
Yeah, I was playing, so, I get there early, one of the, people, there are two people...
I watched that U N I game, I had a...
A heartbreaking one.
I don't know how a team can score nineteen points in twenty-five, nine points in forty-five seconds, have four steals, and keep the other team from going, and not have a single foul.
It was like they had eleven guys on them, that's horrible.
The refs were not calling.
Well, U N I, they barely touched a guy, they weren't even fouling, they fouled fouls, but it was on...
Well, the kid that, the U N I kid that stand in the middle of the lane with his hands straight up, never moved, his feet were like they were nailed to the floor, kid runs and makes the contact, and he gets called for the foul, and they were able to super leave it.
Yeah, that was a lot to be desired, but officials, they still shouldn't have lost that, they could have been man. He had the ball down the court, let somebody run.
Exactly. The only problem that ran into is if it did go down the court and go out of bounds, and it comes back to where it was.
Yeah, and still get it in there.
You had, you had a lot of...
Three times in a row, they're giving you the ball, and they got layups, so...
Okay, Rick is back, and we're in regular session, Peggy, I got the camera on, so, um, the last item in regular session for today is the discussion or any action on changing language in the twenty-eight B agreement with the law enforcement, emergency services, so, I'm gonna turn it over to Dean and John, and you're gonna see what they found out from the last six meetings, and if they want to share with us some stuff as far as, or the, or the, where we were discussing the item of changing one sentence there, and if it's needed, we'll be down, I guess.
You know, and I'll, I'll talk first.
Okay, that's okay with Dean.
That's fine. Sorry. We, last week, we talked about enforcing the local ordinances in all the towns, but specifically because Dakota City was here, so, what Dean and I did is, we met and we went through Dakota City's ordinances, because I think one of the things that seemed like Angelique and Mayor Powell said we're really concerned about is dealing with certain things that, that we thought the Sheriff Department would respond to, so, we asked him some questions about their city ordinances, if they didn't really have answers, so we left, and we went through the criminal section and the traffic section, the only thing that would be covered by state legal law in there would be dog and marge, the, the remaining portion, so they would cover that regardless of whether, they would just write a state...
And we tried to touch on that later, because we thought it might be that that was covered.
So they would just write a state ticket for that, um, the next thing we went to were dangerous dogs or dangerous animals, and that discussed either a peace officer or the mayor could determine that there's a dangerous animal, could determine if a dangerous animal, say it should be destroyed, and then whoever owns it can appeal to the city council and have a hearing, and we, Dean and I also wanted to, you know, look at calls and see if they're actually called on this, but they have been referred, dangerous animals called, they will respond to dog or any animal attacking somebody, or if there's a fight, they'll respond to that, but Dean and I discussed it, we don't think they should be determining whether an animal is dangerous, because it seems to be set out in Dakota ordinances for Dakota Cities, at least, that the mayor and the city council have the ability to handle that, they would just respond to an emergency situation where there's a dog fight, or a cat attacking, or a raccoon, or whatever, so then we looked at the rest of the ordinances, and they mostly dealt with, they, they dealt with nuisances, um, and I know one specific deputy had to respond to Dakota City to check out a house that smelled, and I, that's the thing that Dean and I were talking about, that the Sheriff Department doesn't feel they should have to do, I, I don't think they should have to determine whether a house smells bad, you know, if they think there's a dead body in there, sure, they, they'd go for a dead body, but, you know, if a house smells bad, that is not the sheriff's problem, that should never be the sheriff's problem, and that's, that's the looking, is that my concern, is, you know, I consider the chief law enforcement officer for Humboldt County, um, there have been a few instances, and hopefully the Sheriff Department will laugh about it, when I basically ordered them around and it was not appropriate on my part, but for the most part, what I do with law enforcement, I ask them if they would look into something, or give them advice on how to do with part of investigation, like, hey, maybe can you interview this person, can you go check out this place, but they know what they're doing, and, and their concern, not that it would be an incredible amount of time, their concern would be dealing, enforcing municipal ordinances, no matter what the towns are telling you, you'll end up with them being the nuisance officer for the outlying towns in Humboldt County, which is, one, not something they're qualified to do, two, not something they're equipped to do, and three, a colossal waste of time for the Sheriff Department. My experience with this has always been, we've dealt with the city councilman, or mayor, or the city clerk, or they have a city guy or, or girl that would, would go check, you know, a place to see if there's a problem, like, right now, Gilmore City's trying to take, take property that's falling down, uh, Renwick has done that, too, they've done that through their city council with their city attorney, and, and working with the treasurer's office, and the same thing with Gilmore City, they hired an attorney, they don't have the Sheriff Department, their city clerk took the pictures, their city clerk took care of almost all of it, for, I'm not saying what city clerk sure or shouldn't do, I, my concern is, we have small Sheriff Departments that spend a lot of their time in court now, that spend a lot of their time transporting metal helmets, committals, or forty-eight hour holds, that they don't have time or the resources to be messing around with determining whether a house smelled bad, walking around the house and then landing a report at the direction of the city attorney, that shouldn't happen. They did it because they're good guys, um, because they, they were happy about it, and that's one of the things that we're, we're trying to avoid, just, you know, the fees here, I don't mean to speak for Dean, the fees in the twenty-eight agreement, I think Dakota City's eighty-four hundred and thirty dollars, or eighty-three hundred and forty dollars, that, that doesn't take care of one seventh of a deputy, you know, that's not, and we don't, we don't want it to be a situation where they're the nuisance officer for Dakota City, and now I know that they said that that wouldn't be the case, but in looking at their city code, it, that's the only other possible thing they can have the Sheriff Department do, is, you know, the dogs, whether, it's written in there, the deans show, stay away from all dogs in Dakota City, Dean's not gonna do that, because you guys know Dean, Dean's been the sheriff, he's been around here for a long time, and he's always dealt with dogs, but, you know, part of this is to really let law enforcement focus on law enforcement and public safety, rather than, um, lawn mowing and shuttling driveways, shuttling sidewalks, um, you know, I know the city cops, I think they've had to do some nuisance work, and when you have one city cop working, and you have them go around to determine whether businesses shuttle their sidewalks, or people mow their lawns, that is, and then you have people complaining about speeders, and kids not at school, if they're enforcing nuisances or messing around with that, they're not free to deal with normal police activities that they can do, I'm sorry, I spoke, probably too long, but that's, that's...
Well, those are the things they have to respond to, and they have to be free to move around the county and do some of those things.
Right, and I didn't, I didn't wanna say a lot last week, because I had looked at Dakota City's ordinances, and I, I knew there had been situations where deputies have been called in to deal with, with things that we all agree they shouldn't be dealing with, you know, and it doesn't matter if it's Dakota City, or Thor, or Renwick, or Gilmore City, or Pioneer, it's, the idea of this is, hey, we're gonna provide law enforcement for all these towns, just like we've done in the past, but you're gonna pay us a little bit of money, I understand some of these towns think it's a ton of money, but, you know, we're also not going to be enforcing your city ordinance, it doesn't mean they wouldn't be enforcing traffic, which they do, but they wouldn't be enforcing, you know, city codes, I guess the other thing they didn't have was public irrigation, that's not in the state code, but that's usually handled with public intox, or disorderly conduct, I, if someone goes to the bathroom in public, the Sheriff Department's gonna arrest them, they're probably not...
You're saying the same would be as someone being attacked by a dog, that's, that's a situation you respond to, because it's an injury.
Right, there's a, there's a version, there's a public safety issue, you know, if, if the question is whether that dog is now a dangerous dog and should be destroyed, that's, that's not something that, that the person would give legal advice to the Sheriff Department, I would advise them to make a decision on, you know, we all read stories where law enforcement shot a dog, or killed the dog, those are situations that are emergencies, where they're getting attacked by a dog, and the dog attacked somebody else, but I don't see any reason why the Sheriff Department should be making a determination that wakes up with an animal being destroyed, when there's a process in the city code that allows the city to go through it without the sheriff or the sheriff's deputy doing it, and it's, this is not, and I mean, these are my opinions, but this is, this is what I look at when we're looking at these twenty-eight agreements. looking at these 28D agreements and pay... We need these to tell us what the Sheriff's gonna do so they're not at the beck and call of every person who has them. We have property line complaints, I don't know how many of those, that we have to tell people to get surveys and determine who owns what before we can really do much about it because we don't... The Sheriff's Department's not gonna make a determination where a property line is based on someone's telling them where it is. So... But they're gonna continue to be a call of those because those are track path issues. They're just...
Not wanting to escalate is what you're saying.
But, yeah, they'll deal with keeping the peace. It's just... This is the sort of living, I guess, what I consider time wasters for the Sheriff's Department. You know, I think you all, we've all heard from a lot of these towns about how frustrated they are that they want, you know, some of them wanted a deputy just posted in that town 24/7. Well, we don't... We need 30 more deputies to do that. And I don't think that's being exaggerated at all. We... Those 13 towns that we're talking about, we need three deputies in each town to have one 24/7. And that's assuming no vacation for anybody. But when you tie them up with... They spent half their time in Dakota City, Pal, at the courthouse, but when you tie them up with various activities, we have a situation where it's 3 o'clock in the afternoon, we have one deputy responding to calls, we have a deputy out on the transport, we have a deputy in court, and we have... And that's it. And that may be the case until 7 o'clock or no deal, tell you, calling out extra persons at 9 o'clock in the morning because there were three things that they had to send deputies on. You know, maybe deputy to Sioux City, deputy to Mason City on a transport, sometimes a female, so you have a matron with them, so you run short in the jail. But if the idea of the 28D agreement is to allow them to enforce the law and respond to public safety issues, and not that anybody's told the Sheriff Department or told me that they're gonna respond to nuisance, that's my concern because that's been the cause and they've been, whether it's been the city clerks or the mayors or the city councilmen, they're referring their residents to the Sheriff Department to deal with things that they shouldn't be dealing with. And that was... And I realize it was probably better discussed this week than Mayor Bowles and last week, but I really didn't want this to be concerned. Tell you guys, things that weren't correct that we really wanted to look at, so we just worked with both of them. With that, I will stop talking.
So, at this point then, Dean, are you recommending that we would leave the language the way it is in the original contract that we've been presenting to the council? Is that what you're thinking?
That would be my recommendation, yes.
And you're basing that off with John?
Yep.
What do you think on this?
Because what they have in the city ordinances, it's the state code that they kind of adopted into their city ordinances, which we're gonna respond to anyhow. If we're gonna write a charge on it, it's gonna be a state charge. That way John deals with it instead of the city attorney. Because that's what John does, he deals with the state charges, so.
As you've been saying, Dakota City ordinances, all of what I would consider criminal and traffic offenses have corresponding Iowa code sections underneath. So, they're all... This is stolen from the Iowa code. If you look at the various towns, all towns really have done this. Or not, I just thought it... But it's very common, if you just take the Iowa statute and go and go in the city ordinance to allow the city officers to write city tickets and get a little bit of money for your towns, well, you're not reinventing these things. So, when they write a speeding ticket, it's the same. When they write a stop sign ticket, it's the same. They're not learning anything new.
I think it means who does they make any changes. We got a recommendation to the county attorney, we got a recommendation to the sheriff, they know what's going on in this world, we're just listening to them. I don't think we have any rule or don't have any right to overturn the recommendation. I think we gotta stick with it.
Well, with that, but John's the county attorney for Humboldt County.
Right.
So, he isn't gonna write something that is going to be detrimental to Thor or Pioneer or Gilmore City or...
No.
It's all Humboldt County.
And we try to... I guess I've helped the city hold out with their criminal prosecutions, which I think in the last three years, there's been seven of them. They've all been dog tickets. You know, but for the most part, what the Sheriff's Department wants to make the county safe. And I understand people have different views of what safe is and people at times can be frustrated with certainly with me, and there's no question people will be frustrated with me. But if they can be frustrated with certain things, they think law enforcement should be on top of them. But we've looked into this and I think the sheriff's deputies are spread thin. They go where they're needed, they drive... We have deputies putting 100,000 miles in their car a year, that might be low. And they're driving around Humboldt County. They hit the gravel roads, you look at the night deputies, how many OWIs they get out on gravel, the burglaries that they stopped out on driving around. But there's not a day go by that the deputies aren't in every town. They're everywhere. It may be while you're sleeping, but they're everywhere. And during the day, just like every other place, they deal with daytime stuff, which is usually transport and prison, taking prisoners to doctor's appointments and getting jail meals and serving papers and making...
They're almost more free to move around at night, I'd probably say, than during the day, when you think about it.
Right. But they serve a ton of papers, you know, that if you have a sticky nuisance situation in Dakota City, the Sheriff's Department's gonna serve those papers. It's not gonna be the city clerk or the mayor, the Sheriff's Department's gonna go and deal with the person who's in danger. And I think Dean can tell you plenty of stories about them serving people notices of debt collection and default judgments and lawsuits. Some people don't handle that very well, and that's why the Sheriff's Department serves papers. And I don't feel me to talk if it applies at the moment.
Redd and Bart, do you guys have thoughts on this? And Bruce and Carl expressed there, if you guys have any thoughts on this?
No.
Where we're at?
No questions?
I think I'm content with the original agreement.
All right, okay.
I think one of the big concerns last week was they had to recodify their...
Yes, that was one we got brought up.
We looked at that.
Yeah.
And their nuisance things, they don't mention the Sheriff's Department except for dangerous animals. They mention a peace officer or the mayor. Their city, like their city speeding, their city louds, their city trafficking criminal, they mention peace officers. But the way the 28D agreement is written, they, the Sheriff's Department enforced the state criminal code or the state traffic code, which is tracks almost exactly with the city code. So, you know, if you're talking about a loud party, that usually falls under disorderly conduct, which is a state charge. If you're talking about people out in the street or sidewalk causing a huge problem, that falls under disorderly conduct or public intoxication. If you're talking about sightings, that's assault. That's a state charge. It's also a city charge. Speeding, city charge. And I know Dean puts, Dean sits up there in front of the mesa led tree that the boy who watches people with stop sign, they put their speed thing up there, but it... I didn't see where they need to rewrite their city ordinances. And where it says peace officer, it looks to me to be only with their city criminal stuff with the exception of their dangerous animals. And I don't know that Dakota City or any other town would be put in a position by the Sheriff's Department where they're confronting a cougar or a mountain lion, you know, by themselves with a pencil. I think the Sheriff's Department would probably respond to something like that. I don't really make light of it, but I just, I don't see a situation where the Sheriff Department's not gonna respond to a wild animal running a box.
Well, Dean and John, Greg Stoddy works in a lot of those counties, correct?
Right.
And did he see any problems? I mean, he represents a lot of community to talk to and I didn't hear any problems from the ones we've gone to, so I just wanted to have a thought about this.
I think Greg, for the most part, told the cities to sign the contract and go with what was written.
He did. I think he was comfortable with the language and...
Yes. So, that's another attorney's opinion, I guess, in my opinion, is what I'm wondering about.
You know, like I said before, I know we're there law enforcement, we're gonna respond. We'll take care of the situation, but I just don't want to get into doing the junk vehicles and all that kind of stuff. That's none of our business. We'll be there when they need to tow them out of a yard or whatever to keep the peace because, you know, all I do is if the city hires a tow company to come in to tow a car out of a yard and we're gonna go on someone's property to do it, the owner's gonna be a little bit irate. So, I mean, that's why...
That's what you would envy.
Yes.
And you heard people talking last week about, you know, they're okay with he, they trust Dean, but what about... Well, you know, I think that the reverse is also true, isn't it? The Sheriff's Department's okay with each town, and they sit now, but what if the mayor resigns tomorrow and they have a new mayor? Or what if the city clerk resigns and they have a new city clerk and they read, we're shelling for city ordinances? And here comes the call, we had a junk vehicle, we need to shovel this snow, we need somebody to mow, you know? And it's not that they're doing it to be rude, it's so easy to have somebody else do it. It just is. And, you know, most of the nuisances that the small towns deal with, you know, they almost all deal with the same way. They send a letter or have them serve, say, hey, you know, clean this up, take care of this. If you have a problem, come to the city council and just talk to us about it. If you don't do it by this date, we're gonna take you to court. And that's what we like to see them follow rather than, you know, one year from now, I don't want to have a situation where we're sending notice to 10 towns because they have new city councilmen or new mayor or new city clerk that has decided to take advantage of the Sheriff's Department and tell them, we're out of the 28D agreement, we're no longer providing law enforcement because they're wasting their time with this stuff. And I don't anticipate anything bad now, but...
You know what? We take the recommendation of our sheriff and our county attorney, and nothing says these cities have to sign on with us. They can go next door and get the neighboring county and get the neighboring town. We offer a service, here are the conditions of our service. We've tried to work with you, but take it or leave it.
When did you find out about it? Was it Eagle Grove or Clearing?
Well, yeah, I was told by the Ray County Supervisor that they have Goldfield pays $60,000.
Ninety-six bucks a head or something?
About ninety-six dollars a head. And Eagle Grove takes care of their law enforcement for them. That's what I was told by Ray County Supervisor, so.
And they're happy with the arrangement?
They're tickled definitely.
Really?
Changes.
There are other towns, I mean, they go through there. So, are we looking for recognition?
Well, at this time, we've had the...
You know, this time we have the discussion.
That's what I'm saying, we're just, we're gonna go with...
Where I engage is no action to make a change from what you board members have stated. So, without any emotions, I think we've had our discussion, I think this time we're gonna... Is that what I'm hearing from you, Bart?
I'm just...
Change.
Yeah, there's...
You know, and like I said last week, in two years, if they're not happy with it, we can do the changes or whatever.
90 days, 90 hours.
Yep.
I think that's more than fair.
Okay.
Change is always uncomfortable. It's different.
Right.
Five years from now, you won't even think anything about it.
Well, provided it all works. I mean, their earphone's always on and it's the same way as the county attorney, and so we're all working together.
I don't love anybody that don't get along with Dean.
We don't get along with him.
Yeah, I think he's trying to provide...
And my contractor there, I don't get along with him.
Okay. We've got everything covered, but before you guys leave and we're not in closed session, would you share those pictures on that location out there and talk, let's talk to John, or give that to John and Dean, or especially John. Dean's here and he can maybe address any questions on that if he's heard anything. We've got a area out in the country that seems to be accumulated, while that Bruce handles, he's the one that's got the pictures.
I got one picture, there's a concerned citizen out here that this guy is getting some scrap and I got the location here.
That's turning into kind of a...
Of Humboldt. And on the back side, I don't know if he's scrapping or...
That's west of Humboldt?
Mm-hmm. I still black them.
Oh, okay, I know where that's at, yeah. It's a plant.
Something like that, okay.
So, that's been occurring recently, Dean, or what do you think?
Well, I think it's been, I think when Humboldt has junk days...
Yeah.
I think this person goes around and picks up a lot of the plants over there.
Well, my question, do we have anything that...
What I did with the gentleman to the north of us, I called DNR and they came in and stepped in and with the appliances, you got a, what do you call it, D manufacturer?
Yeah.
You got to take the spray on and you gotta take the oil and, I mean, it's, the DNR figures that they don't want that stuff spilling all over the ground.
Yep.
Well, that's kind of the way the neighbors are.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. I'll set the target, John, I'll make a call to DNR and I'll tell them about this and I'll run out there.
And that seems to be a good place to start because then they, if they address it, they get some attention, they know we're aware of it, we're not really, we're concerned about it. And maybe that way you can get some action on it.
See, we used to have a little over in those years ago, but...
That might be the solution.
In order to...
Listen, John's guy, I'm here at the time, you know, we're...
She can recommend it. My understanding of the way it sits, unless we declare a public health hazard...
That's what I thought.
Which usually requires a sanitarian to act, that we, if we do that, if we declare it to be a public health nuisance, we can clean it up and assign a charge cleanup to the property, but in order to do that, we would need more than just our opinion.
Right.
We would need either something from the sanitarian, something from the DNR, or, you know, something more than, there's a bunch of junk. I don't think we have an ordinance that says, that addresses this situation directly because we've had a problem in the past. And we hope that either, this one, we're hoping we can get out of the highway right away, but we have the DNR going in and deal with that, I think that's...
I think Kurt's been concerned about the one on the highway again, getting back out to the highway, and I don't know what our situation is there again, but...
Well, the DNR is involved and they...
They are still involved, they're still working with it, all right.
So, you know...
Well, why don't we have Dean send that notice to DNR, let them start... You'll do that with the DNR?
Yep, I'll get a hold of that.
And then they'll probably send us a report like they did up there.
Yeah.
That'd be a starting point.
You know the location, you want me to?
Yeah.
I'll get a hold of you after.
And then I'll have you sometime before we leave to send pictures to me on my phone and then when I have my board help me, I'll let them be aware of it. I'll show them those garbage situations, talk to the sanitarian, see what his thinking is, see where our poll is with that and with the board of health, is that work? To get something started.
By me, I'm just relaying the message that...
Good. Well, I think you've been told and we need to check it out and I think Dean's got the best route to start with the DNR. So, maybe lead them up and say, hey, it's Hope DeGore, there's nothing we need to touch here.
Then if the law's all on the same page, then I guess the neighbors don't have...
Because the problem is, if it started and all of a sudden nobody's saying nothing, it's real easy for it to get worse.
It just gets bigger.
And that's, and then it gets harder to get it taken care of.
Well, if you're trying to sell your property down the road...
That's a problem too.
Someone's there, then that is a problem, so.
Yeah, we agree.
All right, thanks, guys.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Hey, we're doing, we're still here, right? So, we're gonna be in a closed session, we're gonna be drainage, close, very, very much, but then we're also gonna have...
Well, what's the name of the drainage project?
Yeah, well, that would be drainage with...
Yeah.
A drainage project.
And a bonding company.
So, can you just take, in open session, go into closed session, then can they close well?
I'd rather go back and go back into the regular session and back into closed...
Because we're gonna have you later on for closed session after the drainage part.
So, you're gonna drain paint first?
I think we should because Rick can have it.
I think you can do it.
All right, so that's what I need the most to go into closed session.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we go into closed session for drainage, provided without any issue.
I was saying the most really thing, the problem...